We're going to go live.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Could we come to order? It is 6:30. And can I welcome you to this evening's meeting of the Policy Committee, which councillors are required to attend in person following the expiry of the Coronavirus Act regulations, which permitted online meetings. Most of the officers involved this evening will be joining remotely via Teams, as well as Councillors Brock, Barnett Ward, Emberson, Rowland and White, who are unable to attend in person. I would like to wish those with Covid a speedy recovery and those who've got family members and others caught up as well. I will invite councillors to contribute to the discussion, but they cannot vote on any of the agenda items. As such, Councillors Ling and Challenger are attending as substitutes under the Covid provisions agreed at the last council AGM, and they also have full participating and voting rights. There is a live stream available through Teams and a recording of the meeting will be uploaded to the council's website afterwards. Can I, at this stage, invite Councillor Jeanette Skeets to address the committee?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for allowing me just to say a few words. I do so because at the council meeting we had recently, there were several of us standing down. I didn't wish to prolong matters further than necessary. I just wish to acknowledge one or two people, if I may, Chair. I don't wish to give a biography of my 26-year stint on the council. That would be far too long. You'll have to wait for my memoirs to come out for that, okay? Signing at Waterstones, of course. But I just do want to pay tribute to one or two of you on this council. And as I said, thank you, Chair, for allowing me to do so. After deciding to stand down after 26 years of being a councillor, serving Thames Ward. I was first elected in 1996. Very difficult year. I was the only Conservative to be elected in the whole of Reading. So I was a bit like Bambi in the headlights when I realised I was joining three others and I'd been the fourth member. Then the following year, going down to three. It has been an honour and a privilege, serving Thames Ward over those years. And I thank the electorate for putting their faith in me and re-electing me every time there was obviously an election. It has been a great experience and life-changing in many ways, introducing me to parts of Reading I don't think I would have stepped into if I had not been a councillor. I would also like to say, there have been many changes on this council since I was first elected in 26 years. We became a unitary, and that changed everything too. And other things have gone on, adding to those many changes. But there has been a constant chair. And one of the constant things that I have always relied on, and I'm sure we all do as councillors, and that's the service of the officers that are here to serve us on this council, helping representatives, guiding us. And some of them are no longer with us. And by that I mean Dick Taylor, who was a great strength and always gave me good advice and guidance. And he's still, to this day, I believe, missed, you know. And others as well, that have gone along the way. John Painter, and of course, Chris Brooks, and now Michael Graham. I thank you all for that legal advice you've given us and to other councillors that have obviously had your advice over the many years. I'd like to thank the partnerships and charities I've had the privilege to work with. They've taught me a lot. And again, I believe that if I hadn't have stepped through those doors, I would never have known what actually makes Reading tick in the way that I now do as a retiring councillor. I'm certainly a different person retiring to the one that I was 26 years ago. I would like to thank my colleagues on this side of the chamber, obviously, my Conservative colleagues, for all their support over the years. In particular, Jane Stanford-Beale, who was my deputy for many years. Her loyalty was unsurpassed. But I'd also like to thank all councillors. I have really enjoyed working with you all. And I thank you, because although we have a different political ideology, I think what we've always wanted, I really believe this, is what's best for Reading. And I really do believe that, all of us. We come from it in different ways, but I believe in our hearts, we all want what's best for Reading. You've always treated me with courtesy and politeness, and I like to think I've done the same with you all. You've been a joy to work with. I know I've made many friends over the years, from all parties, and that won't stop now. I shall take you away with me as my friends for life. It has been, and I keep saying this, a privilege, and it has, Chair, and I know you've done many more years than I have, but I think you'll agree with me that to be a councillor is a real honour and a privilege. And for anyone thinking about being a councillor, go for it, because it will change your outlook on life and this town. I wish this council all the best for the future. I hope you do get the city status. I believe this town is worthy of it. And can I just say, on a personal note, I've really enjoyed working with yourself, Chair, as Deputy Leader of this council, and also to Councillor Brock, as I did with Councillor Lovelock and Councillor Sutton before, but in particular, yourself, Councillor Page and Councillor Brock. I've really enjoyed working cross-party with you, particularly through the pandemic, when the policy was just the three of us in the beginning, and we pulled together on that. And that's the way it should be. When your town's in trouble, or potential trouble, you pull together for the benefit of the people and the town. I've learnt a lot from you all, and I thank you. And I wish each and every one of you all the best for the future. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much indeed, Councillor Skeets, for those words. I'm sure we would all reciprocate those sentiments. And it's been a pleasure working with you. We haven't always seen eye to eye. There have been one or two raised words on occasions, but we've always kissed and made up metaphorically. But we will be seeing more of you wearing a different cloak, I was going to say, but thank you very much for your comments. And I'm sure we would all like to wish you the best, and Alan as well, in the forthcoming years. So thank you very much for that. Can we then move on to, no, no further, Chair's announcements, declarations of interest? Are there any? Nope. Minutes? Can we agree those minutes from the 7th of March meeting, which are on pages five to 12? Sorry, 13? Can we agree those, record? Good, thank you. There are no petitions, but we do have one member of the public who's asking a question, and then there are two councillor questions. So, Mr Cross, welcome, if you'd like to take a seat and press the microphone, and over to you. This question is obviously to me, but.
Thank you, Chair. Redlands Ward contains a number of roads in poor repair, which go beyond the treatments being offered in the Residential Roads Resurfacing Programme. The steep upper part of Alexandra Road is in poor shape and presents problems for cyclists. It has been placed in the Major Road Repairs class. The portions of Hexham Road, Corbridge Road and Newcastle Road, used by the frequent number five double-decker bus service, are also in a poor state. Residents complain of excessive vibration, damage to vehicles and a painful ride for people with sensitivity to jolting. How will these roads be brought back to good condition? How and when can funds be found for this work?
Can I thank Mr Cross for his question, which does highlight the extensive Residential Roads and Pavement Programme that the council is investing in over a three-year period. This programme commenced in October 2020, and to date, over 365 residential roads have been surfaced, with up to a further 125 due in year three. This investment by the council will extend the life of our local roads, will help to prevent potholes from forming, will seal the roads, improve skid resistance and bring our highway network back to a safe, steady state following years of underfunding by central government that led to a deteriorating condition. Early evidence is showing that the number of potholes is rapidly declining, as most recently reported to our SEPT committee. Residents' satisfaction levels are on the increase, and Reading was rated third-best performer according to the annual 2021 National Highways and Transportation Survey results that have just been released. The scale of this welcome investment programme has provided valuable lessons for the highways team to take on board and to thereby improve service delivery through this extensive three-year project. Inevitably, when rolling out such a large works programme, there will be some roads that require an alternative solution to the initial proposed micro-asphalt surfacing material. The upper part of Alexandra Road, Hexham Road, Corbridge Road and Newcastle Road fall into the roads that require an alternative solution, and these roads will be addressed in year three, that's 2022 to 2023, of this programme. Officers are in the process of tendering the major roads resurfacing contract for the Department of Transport Local Transport Grant Funding Sites, and will include these high-profile residential road sites within that programme. These works are expected to take place during the summer months, and an update report detailing the roads selected will be brought to Strategic Environment Planning and Transport Committee on the 7th of July. The council's own investment will enable another extensive major road resurfacing programme to be delivered, which saw an additional 26 roads surfaced in hot-rolled asphalt material during the second year of our three-year programme. I would like to reassure Mr Cross that funding is still available and the roads he has identified remain an important part of our extensive road investment programme. Do you have a supplementary, Mr Cross?
Thank you, Chair. I welcome the council's commitment to resurface these roads and don't have any supplementaries.
Thank you very much indeed. Which takes us on to the first of the councillor questions. I'm not too sure who's asking this on behalf of councillor. Oh, he's online?
Yes.
Councillor Singh, welcome. You're online, I gather. Oh, I can actually see you. Sorry, we haven't got the big screen available, so I'm going to lean across and look at you. But over to you, Councillor Singh.
Thank you, Chair. So my question is, the land surrounding Tyler's allotments, currently owned by the TPLC charity, which is up for sale for development, includes within its protected green space, the Withy's. As it is an area of biodiversity interest, the council has recently granted a blanket free protection order. And could the council please either undertake their own survey or commission one to urgently assess the environmental impact of the building houses on top of an area of biodiversity interest? Consideration should also be given to the demarcation lines between the Withy's and the building plot, as they are based on anecdotal land use from over 20 years ago, and does not reflect the reality of the site today. Also, sufficient evidence has been provided from Thames Valley Environmental Research Centre to prove active badger sets are on the land to be sold and dolled up. Could the council explain how allowing this land to be built on still fits with the declared climate emergency and their published biodiversity action policy? Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Singh, for your question. The land surrounding Tyler's allotments is divided into different designations within the local plan, as was only recently explained to Councillor Singh when Councillor Brock answered a question about this site at the last full council meeting. Let me again explain these elements. Firstly, the in-use allotments, as well as the woodland known as the Withy's, is protected as a local green space. Secondly, an area on Kentwood Hill, identified in the local plan as WR3S, comprises the builders' merchants and adjacent land, and is identified for 41 to 62 homes. Thirdly, another area on Armour Hill, identified as WR3T, comprises the car park and nearby scrub and is identified for 12 to 18 homes. This is the adopted policy position in the local plan 2019, and was reached having considered the suitability of sites for development, including consideration of their biodiversity significance, as well as wider environmental, social and economic considerations. Councillor Singh and all his Conservative colleagues voted for the plan on the 4th of November 2019. Policies WR3S and WR3T both state that development for housing on the land identified for that purpose is contingent on avoiding detrimental impacts upon biodiversity and on providing biodiversity net gain wherever possible, in line with the relevant policies in the plan. Development is also required to protect important trees, provide landscape borders to Kentwood Hill and Armour Hill, and, in the case of the Kentwood Hill site, provide for well-vegetated green links between the COPS and the Victoria Recreation Ground and Kentwood Hill. It will be the responsibility of any developer to undertake an ecological assessment prepared by a suitably qualified and certified ecologist, to demonstrate that development of the site will not result in a net loss of biodiversity or detrimentally impact features of biodiversity interest on or adjacent to the site. This will need to be submitted as part of a planning application and is required in order to validate the application. At that point, the council will seek its own ecology advice on the development and accompanying assessment. The council does not currently intend to assume the responsibility of the developer and undertake additional work at this stage beyond that process. It would not be an appropriate use of council resources at this stage. Badgers and their sets are protected by the Protection of Badgers Act 1992, meaning that it is an offence to interfere with a badger set. A landowner and developer must comply with this law irrespective of any existing planning designation of the land. The ecological assessment and other submitted information should identify whether badgers are likely to be present on any land subject to a planning application, excuse me. And consideration of the planning application will need to assess whether the developer has taken appropriate measures to avoid, mitigate and, as a last resort, compensate for any negative effects on badgers. A developer is also likely to need to apply for a wildlife licence under separate legislation before starting work if a set is to be damaged or removed. The declaration of a climate emergency and the publication of the biodiversity action plan does not in any way negate the need to address the significant need for housing, including affordable housing in the local area. The role of the planning process is to consider all of these important priorities, and the adapted local and the adopted local plan policies provide the basis to do so. Councillor Singh, do you have a supplementary?
Thank you, Chair. No supplementary.
Thank you very much, which takes us on to the final question, which is number three, but in fact it's two now, from Councillor White to Councillor Del Barnett Ward, both of whom are online, I think so. Is Councillor White there?
Here.
Good. Over to you.
Thank you, Chair. This question is on tackling flytipping of bulky waste. Green councillors have long campaigned on the issue of flytipping, which blights the town. We were pleased to see a free bulky waste collection in the budget and support this. We think every household should get a free bulky waste collection. Please, can the lead councillor explain exactly how the new free bulky waste collection will work?
Councillor Barnett Ward.
Thank you, and thank you, Councillor White, for the question. Council officers are still finalising the logistics of the scheme, and details will be publicised before the launch. I am, however, happy to update the committee on how we anticipate the service will operate, on the understanding that the process is still under development. The inclusion of a free bulky waste collection service is a positive approach to encourage residents to dispose of large household items correctly. The project plan is for the free bulky waste collections to commence on the 6th of June 2022, with residents being able to book slots from the week commencing 23rd of May 2022, with most bookings being facilitated by an online self-serve webpage. Residents will be entitled to one free collection per six months of three items or one fridge freezer. So for 2022, that will run from the 6th of June to the 31st of December, and then from 2023 onwards, it'll run from the 1st of January to 30th of June, and then the 1st of July to the 31st of December. The current list of permissible items will remain for both the free and paid-for bulky waste collections, as will the existing rules that a maximum of two sofas, mattresses or bedbases can be booked per collection. The free bulky waste service will operate five days a week, with 16 slots available each day totaling 80 a week. Of these slots, 16 slots a week will be reserved for vulnerable residents and will be bookable by telephoning the customer fulfilment centre. This is because we anticipate an overlap between people who can't get bulky items to Smallmead and people who also may have difficulty accessing online services. So we want to make sure that everyone in the town is able to access this new free service. The remaining slots will be bookable via an online booking system and will be available on a first-come, first-served basis. Slots will be bookable two weeks in advance. The ratio of online and telephone bookings will be closely monitored and can easily be adjusted to meet demand. The existing paid-for bulky waste service will continue to operate as is on two days a week, and will provide 32 slots a week. When booking online or by telephone for any bulky waste collection, residents will be asked whether they wish to book a free collection, if they haven't already used their free collection for those six months, a paid-for collection, or both a free and paid-for collection, which would be two slots. In addition to the free bulky waste collection of up to three items or one fridge, residents can pay to have up to five extra items collected at the same time, effectively booking two slots. These double collections will be restricted to the days the paid-for service operates. So that's on Monday, it's West Reading, Thursday, East Reading. Fees from 1st of April 2022 are up to three items, £52.50, £39.37 concession; additional items, £8.40 or £6.30 per item; fridge freezers, £50.40 or £37.18 if you've got a concession. Prior to booking a slot, residents will also be signposted towards reuse options, including donating the item to charities, reuse sites and selling items. So we're really keen that if the item could be used by someone else, that is what happens to it, rather than it going to Smallmead. Properties that are registered houses of multiple occupation will be allocated additional free bulky waste slots per six months, dependent on the number of rooms contained within the property. We recognise that there is greater turnover in those households and that one per six months wouldn't be appropriate. Caution has been built into the proposed free bulky waste service to avoid the scenario where the disposal budget has been exhausted partway through the year. The disposal costs will be closely monitored, and the number of available slots for free bulky waste collections may be adjusted if deemed necessary. This is a new service, and so we're proceeding on the terms of best fit, but we may have to tweak it as we go along. The introduction of the free bulky waste service will provide a valuable contribution in the prevention of flytipping in Reading. However, the council remains committed to taking enforcement action when necessary to do so. As reported at the council meeting on 22nd of March 2022, records supplied by the council's recycling enforcement team show there were 1,240 incidents reported to Reading Borough Council via the recorded channels between April 21 and January 22. Of these incidents, 655 were investigated by the recycling enforcement team, and 328 fixed penalty notices were issued. There were 28 cases heard in the Magistrates Court for Waste Defences during this time. According to Waste Data Flow for the period of April 2020 or January 2021, there were 1,411 incidents reported to Reading Borough Council. From these incidents, 338 were investigated, 323 fixed penalty notices were issued, and 32 cases were heard in the Magistrates Court for Waste Defences. Please note that flytipping investigations were paused from March 2020 due to the pandemic and didn't resume again until June 2020. And it's worth pointing out that the numbers are different of investigations and reports, because some items can't be investigated. If someone flytips a mattress, there's no information that you can follow up on in an investigation. So it doesn't mean that we didn't do anything. It just means that we weren't able to find out who did the flytipping.
Councillor Barnett Ward, you timed yourself perfectly with a five-minute, literally to the second. So can I ask Councillor White if he's got a supplementary to you?
No, thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Which then concludes questions and moves us on to item five. There are no decision book items for us this evening, which then takes us on to item six. Can I draw to colleagues' attention that we have a split report, we have a part two report, agenda item 13, which is there. If colleagues wish to ask any questions or discuss this, we would take this now in part two. So I just need to get confirmation from colleagues that nobody wishes to discuss these. Can I, in which case, those are effectively noted. We will not be discussing that when we come to part two, but we will now then... Sorry? No, we don't need to take it in part two.
Sorry, Chair. Just a point of clarification. We thought, from what you said, we took that you didn't perhaps was asking us whether we wished to discuss it now or leave it for part two?
No, if you wish to discuss the part two item, we take it now, before we then go back into public session. We're not taking item six into part two, no. So if colleagues are happy with that, yes, fine, good, okay. Then we will, we will then move to item six then. And I'm not too sure which officer's introduced. Sharon Dillon is on the line. So Sharon, over to you. Well, we only need one brief officer introduction. We don't need two. Well.
Sharon or Steve? Who's speaking to it?
Yeah, yeah, so I'm making.
Is that you, Sharon? Yeah.
Thank you, Mike.
Carry on, Sharon.
Thank you.
A brief introduction, yes.
Thank you. So we are seeking approval for disposal of Cavisham Court stables on a 10-year lease, on the terms set out in the report, which does include the option to purchase a 990-year lease interest after the 10-year term. Our recommendation does support the Rabble Theatre. From what has been presented, we see that this is a professional theatre company who celebrate local history. They embolden communities and drive education. Rabble stimulate tourism, they create employment, are underpinned by an environmentally sustainable ethos. Although Rabble's bid is not the top capital value offer financially, it provides the best social return, supporting the local economic, community and social wellbeing for the area and the opportunities. Rabble would help to improve the environmental wellbeing of Cavisham Court Gardens next door, which is an important tourist attraction for the local community. The Rabble bid has been supported by Cultural Services and the council's Conservation and Urban Design Officer, in the context of the proposed use of the listed building being the best heritage of latest submission. The offer from Rabble does not represent best consideration as per requirements of Section 123 of the Local Government Act. However, the council can dispose of the property to Rabble under the general consensus. If it considers that in doing so, the disposal will help secure the promotion of improvement of the economic, social or environmental wellbeing of the area. In this instance, we believe Rabble's proposal will meet this criteria, and for this reason, our recommendation is to dispose to Rabble, and we would like this, like to make this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McKeon.
Thank you, Chair. I thank officers for this report. As the report highlights, this will bring an empty property back into use. Occupation of the property will ensure the conservation of a Grade II listed building. Rabble's proposal supports Reading's placemaking ambitions and contributes to the town's narrative, promoting Reading beyond its boundaries. There's obviously a lot of information for colleagues in the report, and I support the report as printed.
Good. Thank you very much, Councillor McKeon. I've had indications from Councillor Barnett Ward and Councillor Rowland, and then I'll take any others from inside, Councillor Robinson and then Councillor Mitchell as well. All right, fine. Councillor Barnett Ward? Councillor Barnett, councillor Barnett Ward.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to endorse this on behalf of the Cavisham Ward councillors. We've been pressing for this landmark building for the ward to be brought back into use for some time now. Really pleased to see this come forward, and I'm very pleased that the officers have taken this approach of looking at the social value. I think Rabble being at home in Cavisham will bring a great deal to Cavisham, and I very much welcome it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Barnett. Councillor Rowland.
Thank you, Chair. I would also like to endorse this recommendation to go into partnership with Rabble on this and allow them to make their mark on the Cavisham, the stables there at the Cavisham Court Garden. I'm also delighted because as a community organisation, Rabble Theatre has always engaged well and positively with the council and really works in a lovely symbiosis with our corporate aims as far as an inclusive economy, thriving communities and a healthy environment, all of which Rabble just seems to just get. And so that's really, really delightful, something that I think will bring great benefit to certainly the area. I'm delighted that with the listed Cavisham Court Gardens, the importance of the stable will be able to be maintained with this wonderful community group there, and I think we can all look forward to a really wonderful future. It isn't every day that a council can afford not to seek what one might consider best value and to instead consider things such as social value and community value. But in this case, with this building, this is the right decision, and I fully support that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Rowland. Councillor Robinson.
I'll just speak up, that's all right, thank you. Thank you, Chair. This particular agenda item has not been easy for us to deliberate on. Firstly, we certainly welcome the Cavisham stables coming back into use, they have been out of action for quite some time. We certainly welcome the application by Rabble. However, we do not, we can foresee that there is a significant financial risk to the council moving forwards, given, you know, Rabble being a charity, and this is, you know, four, 10 years. And I do wonder what would happen if they did not have significant funds to actually pay the rent moving forwards. So I do not want, or we do not want, to say no to this, but neither do we feel that it is appropriate to say, you know, yes, in view of the risks. So we will be abstaining from this vote. Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Robinson. Any other, sorry? Councillor Brock online, Jason. Councillor Brock, sorry.
Thank you, Chair. It's quite strange, I suppose, to hear councillor Robinson speak of the financial risk when, if Rabble were unable to pay the rent, the property would revert to the council and we could then seek to dispose of it again. I mean, I really can't see where the risk is here. This is a great opportunity to allow a community organisation to expand its offer, to promote all of those great things that the assistant director spoke about in her introduction, and there isn't a risk to the council. Because if the property reverted to us, we'd be able to reset the process and seek to dispose again. I think it's a perfectly good and well thought-through decision, and I'm really pleased to hear so many people supporting it around the chamber tonight. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Connolly.
I'll be very brief, just to say that I think this is a marvellous idea, very reassured by what councillor Brock just said. And as somebody whose teenage stomping ground was in Cavisham, I think it'll be an absolutely superb addition to a lovely part of town. So I wish Rabble all the best, and I'm glad that the council are putting this forward. I'll be voting for it.
Any other contributions? Can I just underline the point that councillor Brock made? Councillor Robinson, this is, for start, we retain obviously the freehold interest. But more to the point, Rabble is an established local group. This is not something that's just suddenly sprung up during the pandemic with no form. They're an organisation with a well-established local track record. Some of us have been to all, I think, all of their performances as a paying member of the audience on every occasion, I would emphasise, and I think we can regard them as a firm and established part of the local cultural environment. So I can't think of a better group to take forward this project. There's risk associated with all lettings that the council does. So I'm just a bit mystified as to the reasons for your inability to support it, given the fact that our interests as an authority are covered. So I shall add any more to what was, other than allow you a right of reply.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. I think in the light of what councillor Brock has said, and, you know, this has reduced our feelings of risk over this, we will now vote in favour, so thank you.
Good, well, yes, but now let's, let's, good, that's, sorry? All right, councillor Brock wants to come back. Have you changed your mind? Oh, he doesn't, no, no, sorry. Right, on that basis, appears to be unanimity. Can I see all those in favour of the recommended action on pages 15 and 16? And that is a unanimous decision. Thank you to all colleagues for that we've got there. Item seven then on page 23 is the contract for grant-funded services for rough sleeping on page 23. Who's the officer? Oh, it's Zelda. Zelda, welcome, if you'd like to introduce this, please.
Thank you, Chair. This report outlines the grant funding the council has applied for to the Department for Leveling Up Housing in Communities under the Rough Sleeping Initiatives Programme and the application and award of grants for the Rough Sleeping Accommodation Programme. The purpose of the grants is to add to and build on all the work already undertaken by the council and partners to relieve and prevent rough sleeping in the town. Report seeks delegated authority to enter into the grant agreement for the Rough Sleeping Initiatives Programme if successful in the application, and for both programmes, the report seeks delegated authority to procure and enter into contracts with the successful tenders. Thank you, Chair.
Modern introduction, thank you, Zelda. Councillor Emberson.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be brief. As the assistant director has said, we know that homelessness and rough sleeping requires a partnership approach, and we're very grateful to the partners across the town who help us in tackling rough sleeping and homelessness. I think the report gives all the relevant information required, and I hope that the committee are minded to grant so that we can continue the work that we're already doing. And just while speaking on homelessness and rough speaking, I'd like to share with the committee that as a council, we are finalists for two awards in relation to the 40 pods, which you will all be aware of. So I just wanted to share that good news this evening, you know, and we're really delighted at the recognition being given to what the council is doing, and I'm grateful to the assistant director and the wider team for all that we continue to do. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Emberson. I'm just looking around to see if any colleagues want to, big no, nobody online. Okay, well, that's, can I see then all those in favour of the recommendations, and that also is unanimous? Thank you very much. Which takes us on to item eight on page 29, which is the annual parking services report, which has been slightly delayed this year. And who's, Lisa Munga is online to give a brief introduction. Lisa.
Thank you, Chair. I'm presenting the annual parking report for the year 2020 to 2021 as required by the Traffic Management Act 2004. This report includes the statutory guidance requirements, information on resident parking permits, parking and bus lane enforcement, blue badges issued, car parks and pay-in display, as well as our freedom of information request into the council. You will note that this report covers the period at the start of the COVID-19 pandemic, and civil enforcement was suspended following government guidance, and it was suspended for six weeks. The report shows a drop in enforcement as a result of the numerous lockdowns in 2020 and 2021. As part of the COVID-19 response, we supported colleagues and partners who were delivering critical and essential services. We also were proud to support the NHS through providing parking at Queen's Road and also at Royal Berkshire Hospital, as well as providing a park-and-ride service for COVID testing. I'm asking members to note the contents of this report, which will be issued on the Reading Borough Council website shortly. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Lisa. I would commend this report to colleagues. It is a very thorough report covering the strategic aspects of our parking policies, and then lists every single road throughout the borough in terms of penalty notices or bus lane fines that may have been issued during the period. Could I particularly commend colleagues the description of the process for taking forward appeals in respect of penalty charge notices which are set out on pages 38 to 40. And certainly, we all have constituents who are sometimes somewhat confused, particularly if they're first-time recipients of a notice, and the summary here is a very useful reckoner to send out to any members of the public as well. This will sit on our website along with the earlier reports. So that's all from me. I don't know whether anybody's got any comments or questions. Councillor Robinson.
Thank you, Chair. One thing I would think would be very interesting to see is analysis of parking fines and also bus lane incursions, to see, I suppose, the difference between those that actually live in Reading and those that are visiting Reading, just to see the numbers. Because, you know, obviously, we are trying to be as friendly and as welcoming a town as we possibly can be, and hopefully a city in the near future. And I just feel that it would be useful to actually understand how many visitors to Reading are subjected to these fines as well. Thank you.
I'm not too sure whether we are able to necessarily do that exercise, but I'll ask Lisa to come back on that. Let me just see if there are any other questions before asking Lisa to comment on that. No other indications. Lisa?
Yes. I will come back to you on that question in other future policy committee, or would it be better to take it to a traffic management subcommittee? We need to look at whether or not we can produce that data. If we are able to, we will be happy to do so.
This would normally come to traffic management subcommittee in January, so it would be appropriate for that to come back. But we'll get you an answer as to whether that can be done, councillor Robinson. The point that I would make, though, is that all our bus lanes are properly signed and advertised, and clearly one of the aspects of any appeal, whether it be in respect of a bus lane infringement, or residence parking, or general parking infringement, the adjudicators, if it does go to appeal, always are very thorough in establishing that the signage and lining and all the other requirements are complied with, because if they aren't, that will be the first reason for dismissing the penalty charge notice. So that level of compliance is pretty fundamental. But you raise an interesting point, and we will get a response for that and get that brought back to subcommittee. In which case, can I ask members to agree the recommended actions on page 29? Is that all agreed? Yep, good, thank you very much. Which takes us on to item nine on page 115, which is the strategic HR and payroll system contract procurement. And Shella Smith is introducing this. Shella.
Thank you, Chair. This report seeks delegated authority for the deputy chief executive in consultation with the lead member to procure and award a contract for a strategic HR and payroll system for two years with a possible extension of a further two years. The proposal is to stay with our existing system in order to maximise the investment that has been made in rolling out self-service functionality to all staff and managers at the council, and if approved, we would procure the system through the G-Cloud framework. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Shella. Councillor McKeon.
Thank you, Chair. I thank officers for this report. There's a lot of information included in the report. You'll note the benefits of an effective HR and payroll system include ensuring that our, well, the council's HR practices complies with corporate regulatory and legal standards, particularly in relation to payroll processing, and also importantly, engaging and empowering the workforce through self-service. So I support this report. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McKeon. Any questions or comments from members of the committee? No? Can we agree then, agree the recommended action on page 115? Okay, thank you. Which concludes then the public items. So I now need to ask the mass ranks of the public and press to leave us. And can I move the appropriate motion as printed? Can that be agreed, my colleagues? Good, thank you, we'll just wait for...